So we're gonna try and see if we can do something with MCAST. And see if that will help. We're working on it. Nice. How are you?
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
It's much easier.
I think it'll be a whole lot easier.
I'm not gonna worry about that.
It's a little bit hot out there, isn't it?
Please sit here guys, okay?
Um, Dave? You can work and sit up there.
Um, yeah, you guys can sit at the table if you don't want to cut stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, you can just close the top of my laptop and push it out of the way.
Can we do that?
Hey Pam, how are you?
Hi, Chris. How are you?
Just don't touch stuff, okay?
I think I might have a...
So I don't know. It's no requirement.
Oh, hi.
I'm gonna have this more than conversation.
Oh, Larry. You gotta stay out of the...
Wait, I don't post much, but when I go over...
Much?
It's much.
And you post, you know, you post.
Yeah, I've been rolling all that. When you put it out there, when you put it out there.
Which is what is?
Six billion people now have access to this.
Conversation.
I don't think forwarding it to yours specifically.
Well, I, you know, I get into one of these. Finally, I got to cry. Come on, say that to my face, you know, and sort of like... This whole thing, the whole internet is about, I could be in the conference.
That's right.
More than that. More than say something to your face, sure. Right. To your face.
Crazy, isn't it?
It is crazy.
Did you see the movie Chef? Is that one?
No, no.
The movie Chef. We must probably get to tweet. So we tweeted something bad, somebody tweeted something bad about him. And he didn't realize, but it got retweeted by a bunch of people. And that does not... And it's like, well, how does everybody know? Does it have a certain effect?
Did you say one game? I'm gonna...
You guys really wanna know?
Yeah.
We'll be lost.
One, one zero?
Oh, guys did the game end before we leave? Or did we leave? Have we started going on?
Yeah, we're still going on.
Belgium one, two, one.
Two, so we did score another goal.
We did.
I mean, a goal, that's interesting.
One to one?
Two to one.
Two.
Oh, two.
If you watch the game, you're absolutely looking at the whole game.
So you had no soccer with...
Well, it's six thirty. I think we should start, so, because we have a full school meeting after this. So, um, you are here this evening as part of a community public forum conversation um, about whether or not this school district switches from MCAST to PARK, uh, which would be the spring of 2015. So what we would like to do is hear your comments. I'm not gonna call it concerns. I, I just wanna hear your points of view. And, um, Mrs. Kennedy is gonna be taking notes for us, so if you could just state your name and your address before she...
This is gonna be outlined. Yes, this is gonna be outlined. If you're not comfortable either stating your name or address, or saying whatever it is you wanna say, just step out of the camera room. Stand up like Mrs. Kennedy. You never really know what's gonna go out online. If you're not comfortable, then just simply, you know, step over by Mrs. Kennedy. I think we're gonna be able to make that out loud and, uh, make a comment. Sound fair?
And, um, it, it just, I don't think we're gonna have to do crowd control right now, but if you could raise your hand and we recognize that, it'd be great. That way we'll have one conversation and not several of them.
You'll recognize it?
I will recognize. Any, anybody wanna open it?
Go ahead, Larry.
Okay, done.
You don't wanna start with Mary.
Is...
Yes, yeah.
Uh, is the question whether or not we permanently go to the park? Or is the question not that we temporarily continue pilot the park?
I don't know what this junk report is.
Position.
Pilot is coming here with full implementation of school districts. Um, so it's whether or not you want to step in this year to part of, um, the process in terms of helping to shape the tests. Really, let's move forward.
I thought the Board of Education hadn't voted yet, though, to implement the park officially. Like, it's gonna vote 2015?
Correct. Yeah, but this is part of the process.
Do it.
Um, looking at that, basically, we're gonna be doing tests. Because of that, this is a project.
May you turn it over?
Christine Darby, D O H D R T Y.
So can I ask a question?
Why don't you tell me?
Sorry, David Hotgras are a little too far this street. Next year, you wanna implement or pilot, or be part of the pilot for grades three through eight, part testing? This year, you say you field tested her? Through all the grades?
Um, we didn't do all the grades, no. We didn't.
Okay.
We did part, we did them at, um, grades, give me a minute, thing. We did them at, at five, seven, and this one one. And...
Who was that?
Yep.
And was it a full field test, or were you just doing a compensation?
No, they, they were very limited in scope. Very limited. A lot of the test concessions were only thirty minutes. Or are...
Many times.
A very limited time. This, and we get no feedback from what was done this year. This was simply for the park folks to determine whether or not questions were valid. They were looking to gather data, and that's, that's how we participated.
First, yeah, Susan, we did, we did, though, get some feedback based on discussions with the teachers.
We had, we had limited feedback. We did.
Internally, so I'd be happy to share some.
We did. We had some internal feedback from folks. From a technology standpoint, we did very well. We had taken the information, and we called it caching. We cached the information, which is, we learned afterwards is the way to go. Because those who were trying to, to live stream it, they were lots of problems with that. So, from that perspective, we were at the same... Knowing that we have significant technology coming into the district through the building projects. We have the technology to lead park, and that's what we choose to do. And, and to participate fully in park.
Does that mean we have it to do without, um, sidelining the rest of the schools' learning? So, for example, I used to be in a school, we did NWEA math testing. And we had the technology, but it meant all the computer labs, the central office computer lab, the library lab, and all the computer cards were taken up by the testing, so that you couldn't do anything else.
No, my understanding is that we have, we'll have a window of time, so we can be flexible with that. So I don't think it's gonna have the interruption of learning that I think you're talking about. Now, can I say with, um, full confidence that it won't interrupt some of it? No, I can't, because we haven't, we haven't done it yet. But I don't think that it's gonna have the kind of impact you're talking about.
Last question, it's just to your point about hoping, um, giving the administration force to design the testing, you said something. Are you, do you think that without our students' scores, the park test would be somewhat weaker? Or less capable of launching?
I think it's fine to say. Because it also depends on most of the challenges. What's, the decisions are made by, I'm pretty sure, in terms of the number of positions that I'm allowed to participate in this.
I don't know what that means. Like, I'm sorry.
Well, it's just, it's, we don't know at this point how many municipalities or school districts are going to, uh, decide to participate in the park. And, uh, so it's still unknown at this point. And so in order to have, I think, a good representative sample across the state, we're hoping that you have a, a good cross-representation of, of some of the best performing school districts and some of the lower performing school districts, and a mix in between, so that you can get a real good, um, evaluation on the tour, is what I'm saying.
And is the state concerned about that, or is that you, Grace Ward, being concerned about that?
Well, I think anytime you're trying to, um, follow the liability and believe in only a high-stakes testing, you'll get some cross-section of the com that you possibly can.
I forget that, but I guess I'm trying to figure out if, if the state has said, we need to ensure that we have so many schools from each population?
The message, the message that I have... The message that I have from, from the state is that they are still really, they want to have a balance between MCAST and PARK. Because they're still evaluating as to which way they're going to go. I mean, I think, I do, again, hearing just my opinion here. I think there's a little bit of a push for districts to try PARK, because I want, I think they wanna see what the capability is technologically. But I also think that there are so many decisions that have to be made in the future regarding MCAST, regarding paper versions, regarding online versions, regarding what districts have in terms of capability for technology. There is so many unanswered questions here that, you know, it's, you almost wish you had a crystal ball to say, okay, where am I gonna go? Because I don't know.
Coming from New York, where we decided to jump in the three-point van wagon, I can tell you where it goes. It's a disaster. And so, I guess I'll submit some questions to come in that...
Tell me a little bit about that. I'm interested.
Um, it was just a disaster. I was thinking, a bunch of tests, and people said, we don't know where this is gonna go. And we don't know how, how this is gonna play out. And we wanna try, and we wanna be part of implementing, and part of the growth, and part of the data side, and part of this, and part of that, and see how it can perform. It was, it was a disaster. It was a disaster because culturally speaking, everybody was really stressed. I can tell you with the amount of paperwork and emails that came home about anxiety around the MCAST, I could only imagine what it would look like if there was a new test coming, or the maximum levels, the new tests are, or the, um, uh, vocabulary, that much more elevated questions were awarded. Higher order, in, in terms of complications, margin. And so, that concern, and it played out, concerning New York, concerning New York, and it played out uh, to the detriment of a lot of people in a lot of districts, and a lot of schools culturally speaking. It's also mentioned because these things now, I don't know what it is, here being a pilot, there's higher interest in teacher evaluation scores. And teachers are being evaluated on the test that we are uncertain of. That not only, I'm not sure that, I feel it's fair to the teachers, but it also adds another layer of insecurity in the, um, atmosphere of the building. And if there's a chance that the state's not gonna go with it, then we ended up having done a whole lot of work for nothing.
David, let me ask you a question. When you talk about, uh, sort of how, how they rolled it out, was the concern, there was not enough transition, or there wasn't enough preparation? Or where did the concern come from? What, what were, what were the specific...
We owned the test, because one of the ways, race to the top, says we're gonna increase, uh, not only reliability but rigors, we're gonna decrease test prep. So whereas we own, A and B, you would go to the store, and you would buy books on how to take a test and sample copies of tests, uh, they've limited the amount of release items. I know the park has released some, but not all. And then New York stopped releasing all test items, and they stopped, uh, allowing districts to keep tests afterwards. Because that's how they're gonna make sure there's no test prep, they're gonna take away tests.
We can't keep the MCAST now.
Right. But clearly, there's enough people who know what the MCAST looks like, 'cause my daughter had a year full of MCAST questions.
We're gonna move on a little bit to hear from the people. Yes.
My name's Pam Wool. Um, did you want the street address that you said?
Yes, do you need that?
You, well, just your last name again?
Wool, W O O L.
Okay. If you can just name and follow me, that's okay.
Um, I'm a little confused about something you're saying. Is this a different test or the same test? Is the park or something?
Well, the park is a national test. So they hadn't done a national test, but New York changed their state test to start mirroring the difficulty level that the COM Corps is suggesting, and the park is, is going to be aligned with. So the, the park has different versions of the questions, and certainly the electronic versions of the questions are different, but the rigor in the testing is, is elevated to the same level. And that's one of the bonuses people are saying, is that it'll be a nationally normed test that we can then say, well, you know, Massachusetts thinks it's great, 'cause it's doing well in the MCAST, but that, how does that compare with California's test, or Texas's test? And so that's...
So here's a, a thought. I know, I feel like a bit of a treat, 'cause I haven't been following the conversation all along, and I imagine there's been a lot of dog around this.
It's just really funny.
It is? Oh, okay. Um, so two things. One is, I'd be interested in what types of, you know, layout of the pros and cons from the perspective of the administration. And then the other thing, I don't know, for some, they're saying, it seems as though there's, you know, something to be difficult at the beginning. But I better get it. I haven't, it's been too much time in here on MCAST. This is a test that's, for some, has less...
I'm, I'm not sure the answer to that. I, I don't think we, I think... I, I don't, I don't know that we know the answer to that question.
It's not a stated goal with this test, then?
I don't feel, I don't feel like I can answer that question. Yeah?
Right now, it's an experiment.
Right. But that's not a stated goal, that one, you know, that they're intending to have a test that involves less teaching of the test.
And these tests and pilots are still, so there's, this is the MCAST test. And these are the, the gaps that are being recorded in college and career readiness. And so hence the title of PARK, which performance assessment, where it goes for college and career. And so they're trying to teach a higher, they're trying to assess a higher level of skill. And, uh, you know, some of the people who are proponents of the park are saying that this is an opportunity for us to remove education in a direction that it needs to go. And others are saying, we just, you know, there's problems with technology bandwidth. Um, but, and these are a lot of the same coms that were, I think, at, when MCAST was first introduced. There was a lot of anxiety about, about this test, um, and, and high stakes testing in general. Uh, there's a lot of organizations who are very anti-high stakes tests, like they're here today.
Larry?
I just, um, I, I came to...
Could you just help Mrs. Kennedy? I'm sure she knows who you are.
Larry Jenta, one thirty nine Crowley. Um, Jenta, G I U N T A. Um, I came to the meeting two weeks ago, when I read this was gonna be discussed, and, and a lot of reading on this stuff. And, uh, I had requests that they have a public forum, so thank you for doing this, and thanks very, very for coming. My objections for looking this, at this from, um, the level of Newbury Board is, um, we've got a great school system. We do well on MCAST. We're prepared for it. I have three kids in the school system. I don't really wanna be a testing site for a test that they're putting together as they're sort of going along. Um, with three kids in the school system, the MCAST is the gold standard. Massachusetts has number, number one schools. Our sciences are up there with Singapore, Korea, and places like that. For us in Newbury Board right now, the safe place to be is the MCAST. Um, we don't have a need, though we could do the test, because we have the electronics, if you will. But I don't think there's a need for us to be a testing ground. I question in the bigger picture why Massachusetts is even involved with this at all, because the MCAST leads the country. Um, we know how to educate children, a- and we've shown it. Our scores are great. So I had objections to this and said, I really don't think we should participate in PARK. Um, we've done a lot in our school system to be very good at the MCAST, and we score well at it. Um, and the state does too. So I wanted to have the forum, so people could ask about, you know, what is PARK? And why is it good for us? Why in the world would we wanna participate in it? And that's sort of the conversation that I wanted to have today.
I, I just wanna respond that, um, my, I did recommend PARK, Crowley. Um, in, in talking with the school committee, I, I really recommended it, because I do think that we are moving towards online testing. I think that it doesn't matter whether it's MCAST, or whether it's PARK, or whether it's gonna be some combination. We will be doing online testing. I want the students in Newbury Board to have the opportunity to practice using electronics, to see what that kind of testing is like. It's very different than paper testing. So, this is, um, um, this next year would be a year in which the district is held harmless. Students can participate. We can get feedback from our students. We can get feedback from our staff. So that was really my, why I recommended it. I come to you as a new superintendent to Massachusetts, so I don't have a stake in it. I was, I was Sback in Connecticut. We had different testing in Connecticut. So from that perspective, I don't have a stake in it, other than I'm looking at, that I do believe that we will move to online testing in the future. And I wanna give students an opportunity to practice, because the skills that are required on an online test are very different from a paper, paper testing test. So that's really what's at the, sort of, heart of why I made that recommendation. It was simply because I, I want to be able to prepare our students, and they do need practice. It's different. So that's a comment.
Mary, if you could just add to that piece, like, the other component is that you get, um, much faster feedback uh, because of electronics, to, to the teachers, um, and administrators about performance of students when you have electronic tests. After you take the test and spring in, for the longest time, it'll wait until the November, December, so you can get the results.
And the students will move, definitely.
And, yeah, so how, how relevant is that to, you know, making changes? So, I mean, that's one component about moving, whether, again, if it's MCAST or PARK, then around to electronic testing.
Mary?
Um, Mary Foley. I agree with everything that Larry said. Um, I think my first question is, has anybody within the school or the school committee gone to a PARK forum to understand everything that's involved?
Forum? I have not done research on that.
Um, so I, and then who's, who's...
I mean, we've been to PARK workshops.
Right.
Um, I can tell you that, I'm not sure, again, you have to remember, this is a work in pro- progress. So, no, no one can even envision the end in sight yet, because it is a work in progress. It, they piloted at this point, so we don't know what the end product is going to be. So, um, we participated and we learned about what State Department is proposing in terms of comparing the two. So that's all I can, I can share with Mary.
Well, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is the state doesn't even decide if they're gonna go PARK until 2015.
That's correct.
So, at this point in time, to me, it's really jumping the gun and using the kids as, as guinea pigs, basically. Um, they lose class time. You have to teach, you have to train the teachers to administer the tests. And I don't know if it's, if it's by district, that you have to have district people rating the test?
No. No.
Because that is a whole other area of it.
Let me explain that. They, they asked for participation in the pilot. The report participated in the pilot. Many districts participated in the pilot at various grade levels. And that was simply, it was a pilot. We elicited feedback from our staff. We elicited, we elicited some feedback from our students. Um, limit, very limited from our students. And, again, the state has extrapolated a lot of information from the data that they received. That's really starting to roll out now. They're really starting to push that forward. I've just seen the tip of the iceberg from that. Um, it's like any other pilot. You do a pilot, because you're trying to get data back to assess whether or not, are we still continuing this, in this direction or not? The, the thing that, that I wanna just make people aware of is that, at this point, what we are being told is that MCAST will sunset. They're looking to do a different test beyond MCAST. Because they're moving to electronic. They're gonna, going to move to an electronic test, whether it's MCAST or whether it's PARK. We don't know where that's going to go, but they, the, the state board is going to make a decision, and they're going to decide, are we moving in this direction or this direction? The first decision that my understanding that they'll make is the three through eight decision, phrase three through eight. Because, I mean, MCAST is in the future, because that's a graduation requirement. So that's gonna stay the same at the high school level. So it's really three through eight that we're looking at whether or not we're making a change there.
Yeah, so then, I mean, I guess my question would be, at this point in time, what benefit to the students and to the teachers is doing the PARK now? Besides the online?
I think it's the online piece. I also think, and again, my, my opinion here, I think there, there is a bit more practical application in the PARK assessment than there is in MCAST. And again, I have to say to everybody honestly, I am not an expert on MCAST by any, I've only been here a year. So I know very little about, I mean, I, I know what I've read, I know what I've seen in MCAST. So I'm probably not the best person to talk to, but I do think that what I see in PARK is I see that there are more practical applications, which I associate with 21st century learning skills, of which we are aspiring for all of our students. And so I think that that's an advantage that I see. Now, is it huge? I can't say it's huge, but I see a more practical application there.
Practical being?
Uh, in terms of the types of assessments that they're giving kids, they're really, they're asked to, um, look at a problem over time. They're asked to really assess data to begin to solve a problem. It's, it's different. It's not, it's not multiple choice. It's not, um, an open-ended response. It's more complicated than that. It's, it is the 21st century learning skills that we are aspiring to teach our children, so that they can be collaborative in a learning environment, that they can have great communications. I mean, it, it's, it's trying to mirror, I think, where we wanna go. Can I tell you with, with complete objectivity that I think this is the perfect assessment? Absolutely not. I do think it's getting at some things that I'm not sure MCAST does. And again, I will, I wanna qualify. I'm not an expert on MCAST. I don't pretend to know the test in set up. I absolutely do not. But I see that it has that to offer, so that's the, that's the, the one piece that I would say to you, that I, I'm seeing things that I like in it.
Roseanne?
Um, Roseanne, S N four sixty-six, Monroe Street. Um, so, and I'm not even gonna pretend to be an expert on any of these tests. Um, so, but I, I do have a couple of questions. So, the MCAST is still a high school requirement. So if the kids are now doing PARK, are they not gonna be prepared to take MCAST at the high school level? Because that impacts their ability to graduate? So that's, that's my first question. And then the second piece that I have is, as a parent, um, the test scores are part of what I use as the overall view of how my children are doing in school. As some of you know, I have a child on an IEP. So sometimes I feel the report card doesn't give me a good indication of how my child is doing um, compared to his peers. Whereas the standardized test of MCAST gives me a better understanding of how is he doing based on, you know, the overall population, or what's expected at that grade level. So I guess I'm concerned that I'm not gonna have that comparative year over year with a new test. So if I'm getting report cards saying my kid has an A, and I'm getting these progress reports... So if I'm getting report cards saying my kid has an A and I'm getting these progress reports that say needs progress, but I have an MCAS that says needs improvement or warning and it's been going like this, that gives me a second piece of data. If all of a sudden I have a different test, I'm not comparing apples to apples and I don't feel that it gives me the data points that I need as a parent.
All I can tell you is that, and this is very preliminary information, that they are saying student growth potential information, which is what you're talking about, that they have, they have a mathematical way that they're going to be able to show us if students are grown. And again, I, I can't give you details on that, but that's what they're saying they're going to be able to do. So, and, and again, I mean, I honestly, we can go either way with this as far as a district and I'm going to be fine with it either way. You know, I really looked at, I do think that we're looking at an online assessment in the future. And I do think that's different. I mean, it's different for kids to practice and to have to use drop-down, particularly if you're dropping.
Again, then if they go to the high school and now they're going back to the other test, are they going to be at a disadvantage because they've been so focused on this other type of testing? I guess that's just, you know, one of the things I want to raise.
I don't think we know.
We don't know.
Everything else is, is sunset, but supposed to.
But, and how, but how long is that, you know, the state, you know?
Supposedly in October of 2015, the state board's going to make a decision about which way they're going. And then we're going to have some direction from the state. But it's, it's a little like some of you have said, it's sort of like building the plane while you're flying it. You know, we don't know what's in the future, so it's hard to say, okay, I definitely want to do this. There's still a lot of questions.
I would just like to try and put a little context into, into this discussion. As we talk about assessment tools, we can't lose sight of what we are assessing. As the MCAS were produced over 20 years ago to a curriculum that was based in very sound and perhaps even advanced educational thinking at that time, we are now embarking in a change, which I think as we get into it more and more, we're finding to be a very positive change that better addresses the needs to prepare our students better in critical thinking, in creative thinking, in communication and collaboration. That is a core of the kinds of changes that are being made in our curriculum through the Common Core. Now, as we take a look at Park, even though it's still in its infancy and it still needs to be designed, it is assessing that kind of curriculum, that kind of teaching. To try and continue to use the MCAS, and that's why I agree that the MCAS by definition have to move on because they are no longer assessing what we need to know. We're saying we're evaluating ballplayers. And that's good. MCAS might be focusing on if you're a good batter. And really what we're trying to do is find out if this guy's a good basketball player. And so the kind of assessment has changed and we need to think about what it is we are assessing as we take a look at this. What really, the magic that happens, I refer to kind of what is going on in our schools. It's not because we have MCAS or because we have Park. It's because of what the teachers do. It's because of the work that they have done in putting together, in mapping to their curriculum, putting together curriculum, learning from each other, collaborating with each other, modeling those four skills that I just mentioned. That's what makes it great. Now, on top of that, we have some assessments that are aligned to that. We're beginning to put together a whole picture. So if it's not Park, down the line, two or three years from now, it's going to be something different. Park is what we're working on right now. We've got a better idea about Park because we've piloted it than we might have about other tools that we haven't seen at all. And one thing we haven't seen at all is if it's not Park, what else is going to replace MCAS? But MCAS are not going to stay around as is for a number of reasons. Cost, efficiency of getting results back, all of these are addressed by technology. And this is why, at this point in time, yeah, it's a risk, but it's also a risk to stay with MCAS. What's really important is not to take our eyes off the, the true ball, which is what's going on in the classroom and what we're teaching.
Can you help us understand why it's a risk to stay with MCAS?
What's that?
Why it's a risk to stay with MCAS until the state makes its decision?
Because we're moving away from MCAS.
I understand that. So I guess my point is we can still teach the better stuff.
But we're not evaluating it properly with the MCAS test.
I'm going to assume that our teachers do more assessing over the year than this one particular moment. Even though this one particular moment is way overweighted in the life of a school. When you guys said we're sort of off the hook for a pilot year, I'd be curious to know what that means. Because as far as I've read, districts are still being evaluated on a tier and teachers are still being evaluated on student growth. So it doesn't, I don't know how we'd be off the hook for a year if we go to this test next year. And I understand what you mean by eventually this might happen. But I guess I'm, I'm going back to, I forget who said it here, I don't know why we need to jump in. I guess when it comes to political compliance, I'm always, you know, taking the path of least compliance. Until we're sure it's good for the kids, I don't feel the need to be the front runner. And so I'm trying to figure out what the risks are for not doing it. And I understand what you say about technology, a moderate.
I think the risk is if we're not measuring what we want our kids to read. We're risking checking out our basketball players by what, how they, they hold it back.
I think the, the bigger problem.
Can I just round out this here?
I defer to.
And there are other people that have their hand up as well. So I just want to make sure we hear from everyone.
I'll defer to Leon, right, but I, I do have a couple of specific questions.
Okay. She's spoken, you have it.
Ralph Orlando for William Hall Drive. For those of you who are new here, I really want to take an opportunity to avail myself of this opportunity because we don't get to converse like this with school committee members on a regular basis. We would have already terminated the conversation by now. I agree with Counselor Jyanta that a lot of what he said is what I believe. I've been coming to these for a while. I'm pretty well-versed on a lot of the issues. I'm not an expert. But I want to make sure that the school committee either here avails themselves of the opportunity or when we get to the conversation of Park versus don't Park at the table. Four questions, because this is a major decision. And I think you need to understand the answers to these questions before you take a vote. And I have a few comments in Mr. Cantor's comments. So the first I ask, and you should all ask, is have the teachers in the district been polled? And if so, do we have a consensus of opinion and how was the poll conducted? The second thing, I think you have.
Can you stop a minute?
I can stop whenever you want.
So that we can get an answer to that?
Okay, that's fine. However you want to do.
This is the time where we're, we're finally going back and forth and I don't really answer to that question.
They have not. They have not.
Okay. Second question that I think is very critical is funding. Now, it may be funded for the first year or two, but is it going to be funded for years to come? Because funding is a very critical issue in, in this district. We all know what the high school lost in the budget conversation from this year. We can no longer tolerate that. So funding needs to be looked at, especially in that, I don't know if anyone's aware, but the state legislature has a bill before them to abandon any further discussions on Park, until which time funding has been assessed. So funding is another question.
There is another bill before the legislature that also talks about increasing technology significantly in relation to Park. So there are competing, there are competing bills.
Third question is, not too long ago, like saying the last week or two, Commissioner Chester did indicate in an article in the Globe that the results of the pilot Park would be available. Now, they may not be available district to district, but they will be available online. And so I ask, has anyone in the district reviewed the results of the pilot program?
They're not posting it.
Well, we should, they will be posted, so.
No, they have a lot of information on Park and D E S C, but those results are not there.
And then the last question, and again, I, I, we'll have two or three comments at the end and then I'll shut up. The last question that I have is, we may not any be experts on MCAS and we may not know what we're going to do with a major decision that faces us because of, it could be Park, it could be MCAS, could do anything we want. And you may not have participated in this discussion, but why did we decide to participate in the pilot?
Because I wanted to see, first of all, I, I will, I'm happy to answer that. I wanted to see whether or not we had the technology available in the district to do it, first of all. And I wanted to be familiar with what are our students going to be facing if in fact we go with Park? I want to know what it's all about and why the reason Park.
And I think the school committee should make sure those four questions are addressed to your satisfaction before you move forward. And then the last thing, you know, I, I consider myself someone who's an advocate for education and I agree that we're moving into the 21st century. And I agree that the schools, the teachers here do something very well, whether it's accessible on MCAS or Park or what have you. But there's a lot of issues, you know, that I don't think are answered. Ms. Foley here has many times asked for a conversation, what the Common Core is all about. I think that's been asked two, three, four times over two or three months and we haven't seen a discussion of that as parents and community members who are engaged in the conversation of this. No one has any idea of what the results of Park are, what it's going to test and whether, you know, it's sort of this unknown. And if we're moving away from MCAS and we're not sure that we're moving towards Park, I think you have to have in your mind what you want to do because we don't know where we're going to go with assessments. And as I've said here many times, it's not only the MCAS, it's the periodic assessments that the teachers are giving in class that you want to make sure before you go to Unit B, they master Unit A. And if 50% of your students don't master that, you have to ask yourself, why the hell am I moving on to Unit B? So you need to define, for the school committee at least, because if they're going to vote tonight, they need to know, that they have an understanding of what Common Core is about and they have an idea of what the difference between Park and MCAS is in terms of assessment. And the last thing is, if we're not moving away from MCAS now and we don't do Park, what we want to have assessed as we move forward to 21st century learning, and I'm done.
Can I kind of comment on what you're saying? Because I thought I did read that, and I don't know MCAS, my kids aren't there yet and so I have no idea what MCAS entails, but that MCAS was coming out with a Park-aligned or a Common Core-aligned test. So perhaps there's another option on the table that it's, it's an MCAS-type Common Core test. I don't know if MCAS is a profit-making endeavor. I know Park is. So it's, you know, there's that component to it also. And then just so people are aware that the difference between, one difference between the two tests is Park is time-tested and MCAS can take as long as you want to.
There is the same, clarifying, it's the same amount of time that's projected for both tests for next year. It's the exact same amount of time in terms of the days and the set of, some of the sessions are a little bit different, but overall the tests are the same amount of time as students would be about Park versus MCAS.
Are the, are the individual components timed? Because I was buying in a, a lot of the Common Core worksheets and projects and the Park test is that it's timed. Like, you know, how many math problems can you do in one minute? And MCAS isn't quite timed like that.
There are differences between the two tests regarding time, that's correct.
The other thing I wanted to mention about the testing, and everybody here can do a little Googling on their own when they, when they get home. But when you read some of the stuff that, the feedback that's coming back from different school districts, it doesn't paint a great picture. One school district here, they classify the test Park, confusing, doesn't work well, leads to frustration. Another school system wrote.
Can you tell me who those school districts are, like, if you go through?
Nashville, New Hampshire. Bridgewater, Rainham.
They're actually doing a good test. They're doing the smarter balance.
They're doing the smarter balance, but it's all, it's all Common Core.
No, they're very different. They're very different tests.
My apologies. Bridgewater, Rainham, one word, frustrating. Problems with administering the test. The snacks weren't on the school district's end, but they were actually on the test, the testing folks' end. On the math, they asked, are we testing kids' math or are we testing kids' ability to write in time? Again, are we more focused on taking a computerized test or are we more focused on math? That's a little bit of the rub right now. The curriculum right now doesn't match the test. And the reason is, is because the test hasn't really caught up with the curriculum or vice versa, whatever it is. And again, I look at us as a school system and I say, why are we doing this? What's really in it for our kids right now? Cambridge has voted to stay with MCAS, PBD's voted to stay with MCAS, Salem's voted to stay with MCAS, Gloucester's voted to stay with MCAS, Massville voted to stay with MCAS. I mean, there's a trend going on here. And if, you know, we.
Just ask your question because I think there's confusion about opting out for parents to not let their children come to school that day to take the test, which is the big controversy that's been all over the news as opposed to they're allowing parents to opt out even though the Department of Education is saying that we can't, you know, we can't, there's no law for that versus actually, because my conversations with the mayor of Gloucester, Salem and Pittsburgh and about 12 other mayors I was with last week, they're all going three to eight Park.
It stems from all of this sort of feedback and confusion and trying to address all that. But again, we look at all this sort of white noise that's sort of happening around us and then we say, do we really want to get involved with this? Or do we want them to get the bugs out first and then take another look at it? And that's sort of where I come from.
Thank you. Pat?
I'm Pat Lovett, President of the Teachers Association, 34 Olten Street. The, the world that our children are rapidly moving into, it is one of the technologies that we can hardly imagine. And you're right, everything's going to be online at, at some point. What you said is, but our curriculum doesn't match the skill set that these children need to have to do this. The Teachers Association is very concerned about that, about Park. While the district is held harmless, the teachers under the new evaluation system will not be held harmless. This will go on to our evaluation in two-year trending data. And it will not be all teachers, it will be teachers who give MCAS, so three to eight. And it will impact our trending data for student growth, what impact we have on student growth over the next two years when our curriculum doesn't match what we're asking these children to do.
Pat, what percentage of that is, is that in terms of the educator evaluation? What percentages is that of the total?
I, I don't know because we haven't spoken about the D E Ms yet, so.
But, but it's going to be less than 5%?
It can be any percent. It's going to impact all of the teachers in grades three to eight who are involved with MCAS. And we feel Gloucester has pulled out of MCAS, Gloucester has not. It was in the paper the other night, Gloucester and Manchester have pulled out for the specific reason that it is going to impact teacher evaluations.
Sorry, since.
They chose MCAS, they chose MCAS, they, no, they chose Park. And they have pulled out and gone back to MCAS.
Gloucester has. Manchester, Manchester made a decision to go with MCAS from the very beginning, Manchester Essex.
Burlington is, is on the fence. They are actually negotiating with their Teachers Association to minimize the impact on evaluations in this supposed pilot year. The Mass Teachers Association does not believe that even if they come to agreement, the Burlington School Committee and the Teachers Association, MTA does not believe that DESI will let them enter that agreement because DESI refuses to hold teachers harmless in this second pilot year. So it, it's very concerning if DESI wants all of these districts to take part in this, yet they aren't holding teachers because of this. So for that reason, not for the reason that it's an online test, because we haven't got any problem with online testing. If we can actually expose our kids to that over a period of time in their regular. If we can actually expose our kids to that over a period of time, in their regular, in their regular education, we know where this is all going. And it's a freight train that we certainly aren't going to stop. We need to teach these children to be part of the technological world. But we feel that the only people who are at a disadvantage in this particular situation are the teachers under our new evaluation system.
Thank you. So therefore, you always recommend that we stay with MCAS?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
In a very, very nice way.
Well, I just actually, I just want to say, just for clarification, I do know there was some sort of mayor gathering of some sort, and I think these, a lot of mayors thought that they were. But for example, Salem, I think she was thrown, she thought that they were. But my understanding from the school committees, Gloucester and Salem, is that they've researched, they've done a lot of what we're doing here, a lot of what people, individuals have done here, and they are voting. I think that you're right, that they all anticipated, but when they got to the vote, I know Salem was not expecting to stay with MCAS. So, and that's kind of what stood out, stood out to me, is all of the different reasons. And there's a lot of them. There's technology, there's the paper and pencil, there's communities with level four schools, community with grade schools. So, you know, it is definitely interesting, but I just think that's where, because I did shake my head no, and I just wanted to clarify, that at least I knew about those two communities.
Salem, MCAS, or not MCAS?
They are staying with MCAS.
They're staying with MCAS.
Hi, I'm Diane Fisher, 100 Sherwood Street. My question, you mentioned that the test is timed, as opposed to untimed. I'm wondering, are there accommodations for those with special needs, or are they, would they be in part of, you know, the first part of it? There are accommodations, again, I think, I, preparing my opinion here again. I don't have all the answers. I think that those are going to morph over time, and I do believe that those will change. I mean, right now, the last that I have heard is that they are staying with our current, for our most disabled students, they are staying with the version that MCAS has, and that's what's going to be for our most disabled students.
Which is an alternative-
Which is an alternative assessment. There will be accommodations, is unclear at this point as to what all of those accommodations are going to be, and I think there's still work on that.
There's a large table at DESC, which lists all the accommodations side by side with MCAS, and they have a long way to go with PARK to reach an alternative assessment for students with special needs.
But I, I think they have to get to that, I mean, they have to, they have to account for the differences in students.
Right. So for those three grades that you piloted this past year, were students with special needs part of that?
Yes, they were. Students, again, my understanding is that students were, they were randomly chosen. So, I mean, that's what the state will pack. So, you know, it was, it was the luck of the ball that a lot of you were chosen to take the, also the assessment. I mean, you know, it, it, the state wanted to gather as much data as they could. We don't have all of that data back yet. I'm looking forward to seeing that data, just like all of you, to say, okay, what does this all mean? We don't have all the answers yet. There's still a lot of information that has to be forthcoming from the state.
With the special education children that did the pilot, were they afforded all their accommodations that they would have gotten on MCAS?
No, they were, they were different. They were different, because they're different, they're different. Right now, there is, there are different, standards is the wrong word, I don't want to use the word standards, but there were different protocols. Thank you, thank you, Pat. There are different protocols that, so yeah, so they were not apples and oranges. They were, they were not apples to apples, they were apples and oranges.
But, but all testing accommodation has to be on NIP?
Or 504.
Or 504, that's correct.
So, how could we not follow the NIPs with 504 and with the test?
Again, this was a pilot, because it's a pilot. But when it's a real test, they will have to do that.
What about for next year?
They're going to have to be, they're going to have to figure that out. I mean, again, you know, what I, what I need to say to everybody is that, that this is, we don't have a perfect picture yet, there are, there are non-answers to every question. Bruce has asked some excellent questions, and I've had to say to him on, twice now, I don't know the answer to that, because I don't have that information. Great question, but no one's answered that yet. You know, it is, anytime you start a new process, there are many, many questions at the end. Solely but surely, you answer them. Think back to when MCAS started. MCAS was, I'm sure, I'm more familiar with mastery testing in Connecticut, because that was right here. There were a zillion questions when we started, solely but surely, you answered them. So this is not a perfect process by any means. I think the value in this conversation is the dialogue, and in raising the questions, and saying, what are we comfortable with? Because it's about, what is the school committee comfortable with? What's the administration comfortable with? What, what the teachers, community, parents, what are you comfortable with? So that's the value of this conversation, and in trying to share information with one another.
To the point of the IP, whether we switch this year or next year, if the MCAS is an untimed test, there's a good chance that the IPs don't reflect a need for extended time on standardized testing, at all, because it's-
A lot of them.
Some of them do, yes.
Right, well, I, you know, and I'm good, I'm coming from New York. In New York, you had to have explicit line that says the difference between classroom testing-
Yes.
And standardized testing.
Yes.
And if the Massachusetts standardized test has been untimed, it might not be there. And especially for this year, that could present a problem if the PARK requires it, if the test hasn't.
I have to believe, from, coming from a background in special education, that, particularly in a state that was, you know, 941, 42, and sort of being in the special level, I have to believe that Massachusetts is going to make really good decisions around their kids with disabilities, in terms of whatever test they choose. I have to believe that.
They're allowed to.
You, you, well, they, you have, we have had a track record here of making good decisions around accommodations for, for kids with disabilities, so I believe that's going to be happening.
If we, if we, I just want to, if we want to stay on our time, we have about three minutes left, so if there's something new someone would like to bring up at this point?
Yes. Peter Klor, 28th Pedestrian Street. I came into this thinking, you know, PARK, Common Core sounds good, but my big question was, what do the teachers think? And honestly, the teachers are the ones who are going to be evaluated by this, and everyone else gets a free pass. It's really unfair to them. And I think that should be the number one consideration when you decide on whether they're doing it or not, because if it's tied into their evaluation, and they don't know what they're teaching, because they're not being told what they're teaching, that's just a whole lot of extra pressure. And I know, I don't want my daughter, who's going to the sixth grade, have to deal with that added stress of having, trying to have her teachers, teach her more stuff, when they're already trying so hard to teach her so many other things besides what she needs to know for the test. So I think you really need to listen to the teachers for this.
Pat, did you have an opportunity, did you call the teachers?
I, I talked to teachers at Friday, at the math, math center. And everybody's very concerned. Not concerned about the kinds of questions on the test, because that's where we're going. The questions are application questions, they're, how do you take all the stuff that you know and apply it to solving a real-world problem? So it's a different kind of testing that our kids don't have a lot of experience with. They will get more and more experience as we get further into the Common Core and its integration into our curriculum. They will have experience. And we want them to use these higher-order thinking skills to, to solve problems, not just do a mathematical equation, but we want them to actually use that as a tool to solve a real-world problem. So this is not a bad thing, the direction of the kinds of questions that they have on PARK. And so we are not in opposition to that. We are concerned that this is an experiment, and we're the ones at risk. And we can still teach these kinds of questioning skills in our regular classrooms, while we get up to speed on all this new technology that we have at the same time. So we are not necessarily against PARK, we just haven't had time to really analyze it and weigh in on it, except that the Department of Education is going to hold us accountable. And we're the, we're the ones.
I'm not saying you aren't willing to change, I'm saying, I know as-
Oh, we are.
As an educator myself, every decision in education is like turning the aircraft carrier good a lot.
Exactly.
And we're asking the teachers to turn the aircraft carrier on the dime really quickly, and I don't think that's, you know, we've got to give them time to turn the wheel.
Let me just explain too, that the math that Pat's referring to, is that we had, we had a great week last week, where we had 30 teachers who were representative of all of our grade levels, almost all of our grade levels.
No, everyone.
Everyone?
Yeah.
Nine through 12, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the major math, so, there it is, yeah.
That were doing vertical articulation and math. And they were together for a five-day workshop last week, so there were about 30 of them. That's what Pat's referring to. So just to give you some background of that.
I just have a question for clarification. Is this the expected process all along, regarding the state, where the state would be seemingly more hesitant than the, asking like this, the communities to have a, these sort of optional, where the communities to take the step forward? Or does this reflect some sort of new hesitancy, or has this been the expected process the whole time?
I'm not the best person to answer that, I've been here for a year, so.
To move through a pilot and ask districts to participate is sort of the possibility?
Yeah, like, why haven't they made a decision, like, okay, PARK is where we're going, and so we're going to support you in preparing for-
From the time that they began, even before, even before they got to PARK, when they were taking over the Common Core, and everybody who was chugging in on Common Core, I think they always realized that this is going to have to be something that is going to have to be studied, tested, and that's exactly the process that they're trying to go through right now. They've done some pilot tests to hopefully identify some of the kinks in the technology, and the kinks in the, in the protocols, et cetera. Now they are ready to go to the next step, which is a proper test, and what they're looking for is some kind of a hopeful balance of a 50/50, so they can compare pretty sizable samples of testing in each one. And then take a look at the results of that and make a decision. I think this is a fairly, a, a good process to go through. I don't think it's a reactionary process to say, oh my God, things aren't going well.
There was an MCAS.
Yeah.
There was a pilot, then they threw out questions because they didn't work correctly, added new ones.
But were they committed to the MCAS at the time, or did they have, were they possibly going to?
They switched through the process, because they started in Texas, and then moved to some company, we know, just obviously.
Different company, but the same test?
Then it was called MCAS, but they switched companies halfway through the process. They have a new vendor, so obviously they went to Massachusetts first.
Is there like a third test or something, like, or would, if, if they decide not to go forward with the PARK, and the MCAS is going to be eliminated, or some said, is there something that some other company is working on, or would it be another, like, seven-year pilot process?
No, there's another, there's another consortia similar to PARK, that, I'm sure, and-
Sback.
Sback, and a lot of the Midwest states are in that one.
And I have to tell you, Connecticut is a national unfamiliar with it, and it's a very different test, because that test is a test in which students answer an item, if they get it right, they move in this direction, if they get it wrong, they move in a different direction. So it becomes a much more individualized test.
Wow.
So it's a, it's a very, they're very different from that, however, and again-
They're online.
They're on, they're online. What I can tell you is that if you talk to people above me, who have been involved in some of the, or a couple of people that I've talked with, the process is similar, process in terms of the test item development, and the types of test items, it's similar, but Sback, and again, like with PARK, you've had some districts that have dropped out of Sback as well. I'm not sure, I don't know exact numbers on either side, to be honest with you, but I think that you have, you have a lot of information coming forward, and honestly, in this whole process, for whether it's MCAS, whether it's PARK, you can come up with a million data points for either side, and for making a case for either side.
I was, I was just curious whether or not you were, whether or not you were expecting all along that the community, as the school committee, was going to need to be expected to vote? Like, I guess when I was originally sort of watching the process and reading about it, I thought, you know, the freight chain had left the station, and we were moving towards the PARK, or perhaps maybe another test, but now, I was just surprised to hear that, that the school committee needed to reaffirm, or to vote on which to go. And I was just curious whether or not this was the expected process the whole time, or-
The school committee can tell you that, I originally came forward based on the information that I had, and said, you know, it's, the superintendent's going to make a recommendation to the school committee regarding this process. And then I came back the next meeting and said, the new information I have is that I'm going to make a recommendation that the school committee is going to vote on which way you want to go. So it's changed that rapidly. So it's, you know, there, you are all right to be questioning all of this. It's about as clear as mud, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm going to apologize for talking out of turn, but I would just like everyone to know, in the room, if they don't, that Commissioner Chester is the chairman of the board of PARK.
That's correct, that's correct.
And that is what the-
Oh, I'm sorry?
That, that's relevant?
I think it could represent a conflict of interest if there's another test out there that the superintendent talks about that the state hasn't even looked at. Yes, I do.
And again, states, just to give you some background, states chose consortium, they were going to go with, whether it was Sback or whether it was PARK.
Spor- not smarter balance?
What?
You mean smarter balance?
Spor- balance, Sback.
I referred to Sback, sorry.
Yeah, Sback, yeah. So states just chose based on whatever criteria they chose to do.
And there's certain, there are a lot of states who chose not to join either consortium.
Yes.
Personally, in terms of, if you're looking for a favorable way to vote, I, if the teachers aren't comfortable with the process, I wouldn't go on the base of that, you know, I would support the teachers. You know, I think there's a real value in being part of research, and being part of what would help us make a better test, and it gives us a chance for experiencing, you know, I don't know what, that could, you know, you know, so I personally recommend going to the teachers more and checking that.
Thank you. I think the past dark time was well worth it, and I want to make-
Some additional answers from whom?
Oh.
Where are you?
Oh, boy.
How many families will feel outside of school committee members, that we should stay with MCAS?
Thank you. Everybody in this room. I want to thank you for coming. This was an opportunity to get feedback from the community, and it's very important to us to understand how you're going to do things, so I appreciate you coming out on a hot summer night to share with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And if you can stay sleeping and wind up on Max.
That online testing and higher-level thinking skills are the wave of the future. They're here now, I don't even think they're the wave of a future. I think they're here now. I think the state is in a process, and I'm not sure I want to be part of that guinea pig sort of thing. It's discouraging to me that I don't have specific information about accommodations for our special education students. I think that's a huge piece for me. The other huge piece for me is teacher evaluation. As you all know, I was a teacher for a very long time, and our teachers will be held accountable. When we start taking a look at data in the evaluation system, it's, it's a, it's a two-year approach, so if we go to PARK next year, it will count toward teacher evaluation, and I'm not sure that's fair to our teachers. I heard someone talk about, you know, new buildings. We have the technology. I am not convinced at this point that all of our students in second grade going into third grade have had enough keyboarding experience, technology experience, not for the fault of any teachers, but we just don't have that capacity currently at the Brezner Hand School. So given all of that, I'm going to support this district staying with MCAS for another year. So I think we've all voted unanimously, actually, to, yeah, we have to vote, a motion, yeah. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Kennedy? Would you please state the, the, the motion, because the motion said PARK?
The motion stated that-
Do I'm going to read it?
Yes.